All right. Good evening, everybody. The Fall River School Committee meeting will come to order. Pursuant to the open-meeting law, any person may make an audio- video recording of this public meeting and may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed knowledge impermissible. We can have a roll call, please.
Mr. Agia? Mr. Coogan?
Here.
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Hetzel?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Mr. Martins?
Here.
Mayor Carruth.
Here. Okay, we're gonna have a salute to the flag, please. (inaudible) Thank you. Okay. We do have one person signed up for public input time this evening. Malady Rondou. And the item is the Fonska School.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for taking the time to hear what I have to say. Full disclosure, I'm here as a teacher, but this really has more to do with my son and his experience at Fonska Elementary School. We moved here to Fall River in the summer of 2017, and he began attending at Fonska in September of that year. The bullying began on the first day of school, began on the bus, and it only escalated to the point where he was begging not to go to school, faking illnesses, arguments were commonplace in my house in the mornings. Then in February of 2018, I picked him up from school early. His class was returning from the cafeteria, walking by the front office where I was waiting to pick him up, and I saw a fight break out between two eight-year-old boys. This was third grade. Having taught high school, I've seen that type of thing before, but what really shocked me about this was the level of intensity from these two little boys. And that day, I took Aiden home, and I asked him, I says, "Does that happen a lot at your school?" He said, "Yeah, it happens every day. There's a fight every day in an elementary school." So on February 15th, 2018, I had a meeting with Ms. Lisi, the principal, and Ms. Gonzalez, my son's guidance counselor. I explained that I was removing my son to homeschool immediately, that there was a rampant bullying problem at Fonska. They requested that I bring my son in so they could talk about who was responsible and what had been going on. I complied, and in the end, it didn't matter. Now, not a lot of parents are in the position where they can just homeschool. One, I'm a certified educator, so I'm not scared to take on that task. I was, I'd just finished up a long-term subposition for another school district, so I wasn't working, and my husband has a steady job with good income that allowed me to stay home with my son. He has not yet returned to Fall River Schools, and given the events of this past week, I doubt he ever will. So, a year ago, I went to Fonska Elementary as a schoolteacher, and said, "I see something very wrong here," and nothing was done. My question to the school committee, to the district, to the superintendent, what are you gonna do about it now? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have the superintendent's report.
So I have two items on the agenda, but if I may just make a comment very quickly that we're all grieving with the Fonska community right now, and I just want to say to the teachers, the administrators, the adjustment counselors, the families, our friends at Diamond, everyone who was showing tremendous support and care and spirit of love for the city, we want to thank them from the bottom of our heart, and I really want to say that Principal Lisi has been fantastic leading through this very troubling crisis and working very closely with the family as we speak. And this is one of those situations where no superintendent, no school committee, no family, no teacher, no anybody ever wants to have to go through and alter often, in all my experiences in education, it happens too frequently. So with that, I just want to say that we're always here for the families, and we'll continue to be so, and we are very thankful for the outpouring of support through this troubling So the two things that I have on the agenda, I'll start backwards, the school finance symposium update. We met on Tuesday, January 8th, 2019, at Keith Middle School in New Bedford at 6:00 PM for a joint convening to discuss school funding. That was attended well, I think, by many different members of the South Coast community to talk about the Foundation Budget Review Commission. That same night, there was two other presentations, one in central Mass and one in the north shore of Massachusetts on the same topic. We've been very excited to hear the support from all corners of government, from all corners of the Commonwealth regarding the recommendations to implement the full funding of the foundation budget. So for us specifically, where that makes a big deal is in the second language learning bucket and in the students living in the high-needs poverty category. So if those two areas were fully funded in Chapter 70, we'd stand again an additional nineteen or so million dollars. We know that there's talk about perhaps on the Hill, funding that this year. I think it'll be a slow rollout if it does, so that wouldn't be nineteen million dollars at once, but that's really what we're underfunded when you think about the 1993 law for how schools are funded. So there's gonna be more talk about this. I appreciate the activism of members of the committee, also your association in support of the Foundation Budget Review. Our unions are very closely aligned and united with leadership, all the associations in the Commonwealth, and our local delegation, and of course, members of the school committee. So this is something that hopefully we'll hear more of over the next few weeks and months, but it's so far very positive that this dialogue is happening, and it's done so respectfully. This is not about pointing fingers and blaming anyone. What we're all saying is, hey, we need to take a look at this formula again and fully funded to support the needs of kids, not just in cities, but also rural areas and also suburbs as well. So it's one thing that we can all unite behind collectively, because it helps charters, it helps regional vocationals, and it helps local district schools. So this is something that we can all get behind. Second thing I have for you on the agenda is the cursive writing. In our last school committee meeting, we talked about this being a need. In the school year 2016, a team of teachers came together to form a report card committee. That committee also recommended the use of a cursive writing curriculum in grades three called Loops and Groups to use. There was discussion about that being implemented in grades three through five in 2016 in the spring, but it wasn't, and we're just gonna own that and say it wasn't. But we will say now that we've met, we've met at a subcommittee of the school committee around curriculum instruction, and we will be implementing this curriculum in grades three through five, following the assessments each year. So that will be in spring semester, so students will get three years of cursive writing units over three years of elementary school, and we'll continue to use, and we definitely do cursive in other areas of the curriculum as well, but that's something that we will be working on. There'll be no additional costs, given that we have the materials, and we'll be able to replicate them moving forward. So this is something that I know the committee wanted us to take a hard look at. We've done our due diligence, we've done our homework, we figured out what the disconnect was, and we fixed it, and we reported that to the curriculum instruction subcommittee. That is all that I have for you tonight, and I look forward to a productive meeting.
Good. I have a question about the cursive writing. Do we currently provide typing classes?
Great question. On Wednesday, Ms. Coogan and I have visited one of the elementary schools we were in, the Retinal, and in first grade, first grade, we begin keyboarding, and it continues all the way through, and some of what the online programs that we're members of programming are fascinating, and we saw a whole class, thirty from the first grade, really engaged in keyboarding and getting their typing skills. You know, in some places, it's been eliminated from the curriculum, because people say, "Oh, the kid's already come with it," but here, we do it, we start in the first grade, and we continue through, and you'll see, like, those types of learnings get more advanced, so, you know, it turns into coding in fourth and fifth grade, and then it continues with the computer sciences as we get on into the middle and high school levels. So it's the technical part of what technology provides, we start in first grade.
Keyboarding is gonna be more important than cursive writing on a daily basis, so...
It is.
...we gotta make sure that we're prioritizing properly.
Right.
I don't use cursive at all.
Yeah, so isn't there signing your names and those things? We gotta, we still have to, you know, we believe in the well-rounded child, and the whole child, and we think that it's a good way to do it, which we agreed in three, four, five.
Sure.
On cursive, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your comments, but I did wanna praise the idea of just bringing cursive back, and it's gonna come back in a very, it's not gonna take up too much curriculum time, it's gonna be after all the MCAS is done and teachers have a little extra time just to work it, but there are some very proven cognitive benefits to cursive writing, as well as reinforced learning, and when you write it, you remember it. And when I was in missile training, there was a term I learned back then called a zone of proximal development. If anybody out there understands that terminology, that's the zone in our brains that processes information, and when a child writes, handwrites what they're learning, it's sort of like reinforcement to what they're learning, and so there's scientific data proven on that. I'm happy we're gonna have that a little bit back. We're never gonna stop the flow of technology, it's always gonna move forward, but I'm glad that cursive will have a small piece of the pie in there. So I praise that action. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Martins?
With all due respect...
Can you just speak into the microphone, please?
With all due respect, how did you sign, or how did you endorse your driver's license and other legal documents that you have to sign?
Yeah, I don't think it's a problem to encourage the signature, learning a signature, but cursive as a whole, and I'm not disagreeing that we can bring it back as an additional cognitive task, that's fine. I don't wanna take away, I think it needs to be an entire well-rounded approach to the curriculum. That's, I think, very important. So, of course, I signed my driver's license with my signature.
Because you can write in cursive.
In cursive.
Absolutely. I mean, you can write in cursive, absolutely, even though you don't use it frequently, but you can write in it, absolutely so. I had a position during the summertime for an organization that dealt with children with disabilities, and my job was to find jobs for those kids. Many of them came and said, "Mr. Martins, 'cause it says signature, I can't write in cursive." I said, "Wait a minute, what grade are you in?" "I'm in twelfth grade, eleventh grade, tenth grade." I had a bunch of kids who couldn't write in cursive. Now, that was, that position was, the jobs that I was looking for were not in Fall River. They were in New Bedford, but nevertheless, kids couldn't write in cursive.
They couldn't sign their name?
They couldn't sign their name.
So they didn't, I'm sure that application was probably filled out in print or typed? It was just the signature that was required?
It was all filled out in print, and it's like, oh, my goodness, and I'd help, but you can't, he can't sign it, so I'd...
I just don't want us to lose focus on the importance of keyboarding, typing...
Definitely not.
...these other, and that was the basis of my question. I wasn't questioning the committee's wisdom and putting together the possibility of after MCAS, cursive training, that's okay, but I was just making a point that it's really important that we ensure that students learn how to type, because I'll tell you what, today, and I'm sure other people at this table would agree, and probably lack of the necessary skills to type quickly at this very table. I know I certainly do, and that's because I didn't have keyboarding when I was in school, and that's only a decade ago, never mind two, three, four decades. So I think the keyboarding element was really important, which was the nature of my question. I was happy to hear that we begin that at first-grade level.
Understood.
Thank you.
However, it's equally important to have cursive.
We disagree there, but that's okay. All right, moving on. Approval of minutes, is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Agia? Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Carruth?
Yes. And the student comment slash delegate report?
So this week, I'm also speaking on behalf of my friend Sumaya, who couldn't make it this week, and I'd just like to provide update on the two topics that she had put in our agenda. So first of all, there's a human trafficking event taking place at UMass Dartmouth on January 24th, and she would just like to make known that all are welcome, and that there's going to be a guest keynote speaker, and for all the people on the committee, she will be sending out a flyer tonight regarding that. The second event that she had asked me to communicate was that there's our National Honor Society induction this week. It'll be taking place this Thursday at our auditorium, and it's a great event to go to, and I know that Sumaya is involved in, like, the office for National Honor Society, so she's saying that all are welcome, and that it would be a privilege to have everybody there. So on my behalf, I'd just like to open up by recognizing the amount of greatness that's taking place within the school committee and within the schools in Fall River. So this year, we actually have forty-seven inductees being welcomed into our prestigious National Honor Society at Derfi, which ever since my arrival four years ago has gone up steadily, and that just shows the improvement going on because of the rigor required to get into the program, and not only are people getting in, but people are staying in and completing hours of community service, which is something that we should all look upon with a lot of gratitude for. But also this past week, at Derfi, we had our John and Abigail Adams Scholarship Ceremony, and we had one hundred thirty-eight senior students receiving awards, and in a class of around four hundred ninety-nine, I believe, that makes up about twenty-eight percent of all seniors receiving this award, granting them free tuition to state schools, and I would just like to take a moment to congratulate Dr. Malone, Principal DeMaris, all of our faculty from Derfi in the audience, but also the school committee, because the stuff that we're talking about is, there's definitely progress taking place, and it's something that we should hold our heads high for, because the sky's the limit. So recently, I've been speaking about starting this program at Derfi called Tutors for Toppers, where we have, like, senior students or junior students coming together and tutoring fellow underclassmen students or anybody that would need help, and we sent out a survey this week to find anybody that would be interested in being a mentor, and we actually got eighteen students willing to do so, which is a number that was much higher than I expected, and we plan to get this club running in February, where we would help students for all three MCAS exams of biology, English, and math, but we're also collaborating with our college readiness club to help any juniors or sophomores that are looking for any insight regarding the college application process. Next thing is the sales of the I Am Fall River shirts, which have been going around our city. It's definitely something awesome, seeing a shirt that our student government team has designed just blowing up and seeing everybody so interested in buying them. We've placed two orders. The first one came in a couple weeks ago, it was fifty-five shirts, and we got one this past Monday of seventy-five shirts, and we sold out after two days, which...
I'm an XL.
You're an XL?
Get me one.
Okay. So we placed another order of one hundred twenty-five, and as Mr. Corey just stated, we have another preorder taking place, so I think we're gonna need another order soon, but one awesome thing that's taken place is that we decided half of the profit that we make off of these shirts for the month of January will be donating as a part of student government to the Four Winds Fire victims, and seeing how we've sold so many shirts, that it's definitely going to a great cause, and we're gonna donate quite a bit of money. And last but not least, kind of trailing off of that, this past Friday, we had our first basketball game at Derfi with the Big Three matchup versus Brockton, and our team put together a tailgate right before the match started, and we were just selling pancakes and hot chocolate, something fun, something quick, and all of our proceeds are going to the Four Winds Fire, and we actually raised three hundred fifty-nine dollars' worth of money, but we also have two boxes about this tall, full of clothing and toiletries that we're gonna donate to the Firefighters Association to help out for the cause. So with that, I'd like to yield, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like, can I make a brief statement? I recommend an XXL for Mr. Corey, okay? That would be better suited.
It's a S medium. Next, we have a number of travel requests, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Agia? Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Carruth?
Yes. We have a number of donations.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, all donations, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Agia? Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Carruth?
Yes. And superintendent, can you read the donations, please?
Sure. From the Bristol County Savings Charitable Foundation to the Fall River Public Schools care of Barbara Allard for attendance initiatives, twenty thousand dollars. From Meditech to the Fall River Public Schools for Technology, fifteen thousand dollars. From New England Dairy Council to the Fall River Public Schools care of Ken Pacheco, ten thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars. From Tool Buzz Box, Michael Delisle to Derfi High School, three thousand two hundred dollars. From Bayco's Bank to Cuss Middle School, one thousand eight hundred dollars. From Donors Choose to Fonska Elementary School, six hundred twenty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents. From Donors Choose to Derfi High School, five hundred forty-nine dollars and ninety cents. From Carrie Devine to Derfi High School, four hundred and ninety-six dollars. From the Jones Family to Watson Elementary School, four hundred and fifty dollars. From Stephen McCarthy to the Green Elementary School, two hundred and thirty dollars. From Donors Choose to Tanze Elementary School, one hundred and thirty dollars and thirty-eight cents. From Kathy and Bob Wood to the Fonska Elementary School, six Google Chromebooks. From National Grid to the Fall River Public Schools, hot supplies for students throughout the district given out in packets. Thank our donors for those outstanding donations, and we look forward to implementing them shortly.
Thank you. We have a number of contracts for approval tonight, any separation, there are only three. Any separation?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to approve has been made and seconded, roll call, please, on all contracts.
Mr. Agia? Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Carruth?
Yes. We have a number of grants for our approval this evening? Separation on the grants? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Motion to approve all grants.
Second with a question, Mr. Chair. If I may, if I can ask the superintendent, the third one down, the turnaround assistance, is that from the DESI? Or is that the Fonska?
So it's, no, this is for the four new schools identified, and the lowest ten percent in the accountability. It's the first, this is the first time the state's doing it, so you can see how it's less money than in the past, but the expectations are slightly different. They will be able to apply down the road for more funding, but this is the one-year planning grant.
I yield, thank you. There was a motion, I didn't hear a second, but there may have been one. Was there a question? Okay, second, roll call, please, on all grants.
Mr. Agia? Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Carruth?
Yes. Okay, discussion item number one is a vote to approve the election of the vice chair of the Fall River School Committee.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to nominate Mark Costa as vice chair.
The nomination for Mark Costa as vice chair has been made, is there a second? Is a second? Any other names? Okay, no other nominations, roll call.
Mr. Agia? Mr. Coogan?
Costa.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Say your name, your name, the name of the person.
I'm sorry?
The name of the person.
Costa.
Mark Costa.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Name of the person.
Name of the person.
Oh, Mark Costa.
Mr. Martins?
Costa.
Mayor Carruth?
Costa.
Mr. Corey? So I just wanna state for the record, off the record, that in Committeeman Agia's absence, he's also in favor as well.
Well, that won't be reflected in the vote, but...
It's not in the vote, but I just wanted to state that in his absence.
You're authorized for that?
Yeah, I'm authorized.
All right. Mr. Costa, congratulations again, and if you wanna make a statement, you're...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be real brief. It's an absolute honor and a privilege to continue to serve in this role as the vice chairman of this committee, and I'm impressed every day by the work that I see my colleagues doing, whether it's in schools or whether it's their work with outside organizations to advocate for additional funding for our students here in the district, whether it's work they're doing with the superintendent, advancing initiatives that are important to the students in this city. It's an honor. This is a highly functioning school committee that's shown time and time again its ability to work not only together, but also with the city's administration, the school administration, all of our teachers' associations, excuse me, our teachers' association, and also all of our unions, and I just ask that we continue to carry ourselves in that manner, and I look forward to serving with all of you. Thank you, I yield, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Congratulations again as the vice chair.
Thank you.
Okay, item number two is the recommendation of vote to approve the appointment of the special education director, Michael Losch, as recommended by the superintendent of schools.
May I bring forward Assistant Superintendent Anne Dargan to present the candidate in the background.
It's my pleasure to introduce to you this evening, Mr. Michael Losch. You have in your packet his resume as well as copy of his certification. I'd like to highlight a few things that he cited and shared with us in his cover letter that actually became a reality as we went through the interview process. Michael currently is the role of Assistant Director of Special Education for High Schools in Boston Public Schools, and he said that in his application to Fall River, he was seeking a new challenge where he can apply the valuable skills and knowledge he's attained in his present and prior positions. Currently in Boston, he oversees all aspects of special education and student services for the high school. He also oversees the public day program, and he's the district lead for social-emotional impairment, and he oversees one quarter of the district's out-of-district placements. Michael has been in the administrative role for about nine years, and he believes that his unique perspective on special education and leadership development would be a great benefit to our district. Michael shares, and I quote, "I'm very excited at the potential of the special education director position and to be a part of a well-respected school district like Fall River. It became very evident as we went through the interview process, and some of my colleagues who sat on that interview committee are here this evening to support the recommendation, the appointment of Mr. Michael Losch as our next special education director." So I'm gonna present Michael to you.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Anne.
Good evening.
First, I just wanted to note what an honor it is to be here, and with your approval to potentially become a part of a great city and school district that is undoubtedly on the rise. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve has been made.
Second.
Is there a second? Comments, questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Agia? Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Carruth?
Yes. Congratulations, welcome to the district. Thank you. Okay, item number three is second read and vote to approve the budget priorities for FY '20. This has already previously been presented by...
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Agia? Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes. Yes.
Mayor Carrick?
Same. Item number four is the first read of the Program of Studies Course Catalog at Durfee High School.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Coogan.
I believe, I believe that's a mistake. I had discussed it earlier. I'd like to see that amended to a second read and vote to approve.
Yep, that is correct. I spoke to the Superintendent as well. Are you making that in the form of a motion?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to change this from first read to a second read and approve for tonight. The motion has been made and seconded. Seconded. Roll call, just to be safe on that.
Mr. Agia? Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Carrick?
Yes. Okay, so the item now is to a second read and approve...
Motion to approve is amended, Mr. Chairman?
Motion to approve is amended, has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, roll call, please.
Mr. Agia? Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Carrick?
Yes. Item number five is discussion of vote to approve the transportation contract for Tremley's bus vans as referred to Facilities and Operations Subcommittee.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Point of order.
Point of order, Mr. Martins.
Number five and number six sort of go hand in hand. Could we, I request that we waive whatever rules are necessary, but I'd like to discuss both together. So that, because I'd like to refer to number five and also to refer to number six as part of my discussion.
Yeah, if you want to waive, if you want to make a motion to waive the rules, Mr. Martins?
So be.
Okay, motion to waive the rules to discuss items number five and six, which are obviously related, transportation contracts.
Mr. Chairman, I understand what he said, I just didn't hear why.
He just wants to refer to both and not have to, you know, discuss one without discussing the other. Is there both, you know, transportation contracts?
I thought I read it that one was ready to go, the other needed to be bid out, though.
Perhaps those are the questions that Mr. Martins wants to ask about them.
They'll still vote on them separately.
Yeah, they'll still be voted on separately.
They'll still be voted on separately, he wants to discuss them as one.
Exactly right.
Okay, the motion has been made, is there a second?
Checking.
All in favor in waiving the rules?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. Okay, Mr. Martins, you have the floor. I presume you have some questions, or Mr. Pacheco?
Thank you. As, Mr. Pacheco, as I read through all of this material, my first question is that basically number five makes reference to the whole district. And it does state, and I just want to make it publicly known, that there were no bidders for the bus and van transportation for the whole city as one complete unit. Is that correct?
Exactly. So no one bid on the bus portion of the contract of the IFB.
For the bus van, bus portion?
Bus portion. The van portion was...
For the entire school, the entire school district?
Exactly, yes.
Okay. Now, you mentioned van. Could you tell me where in this material, whether it be number, you know, discussion five or discussion six, whether it makes reference to a distinction between a bus and a van?
I'll let Mr. Labrie answer that. Mr. Labrie is from Futures, and he is the author of the IFB.
If you, if you look at bid form one, that's where the easiest distinction can be made. You have a relatively large amount of your budget for transportation is spent on van transportation.
What age is that?
Oh. If you look at, oh, excuse me one minute, I want to get the... transportation, which you'll see is the sizes of various buses and bus monitors as you go into...
Page forty-two?
Page forty-two. Of the original bid.
Well, I don't know if, I don't know if what I...
You may be looking at the rebid document?
Yes, I don't know what the original bid said, because I never received it. I don't know what it said. All I'm going by is the material that I have.
So that, I don't know what he has. So the document that you have is the rebid document. That's the document that is what's going out for the lodge buses. There is nothing in that document that you have that's referring to the vans.
I guess that's why I don't see it.
Because that document is not about the, that document is not about the contract approval, it's about the next round of bidding for the lodge buses.
Okay. Let me explain it this way. The original bid broke out the vans transportation separate from the school bus transportation, and allowed a potential contractor to bid for all of the work, or a potential contractor to bid for the buses or the vans. We received a bid, which I think is a favorable bid for the vans, but not for the buses. Therefore, there is a need to rebid the bus portion of the original bid. And the recommendation in five is to award the vans.
What is the savings? Just for clarity, so everybody's on the same page. What's the savings achieved in the vans bids that we got back? It was like half a million dollars, five hundred thousand?
Based on our projection, which the Transportation Subcommittee asked us to do, we projected your cost through the end of this year, and it's roughly $598,000 in savings next year compared to what yours...
Is that year after, year, is that a yearly savings?
That's an annual savings.
Annually?
Annual.
Over the five years?
Each year.
Each year? So it's about...
First year savings, second, third, fourth year cost avoidance, just buses.
No, that's vans.
Vans. Vans, correct.
Before route optimization.
Correct.
So it's 500,000 savings in the first year, and then it goes back up to the current cost, so it's 500,000 annual savings over each year of the contract.
Correct.
Which one?
No, it's, it's savings the first year, cost avoidance thereafter.
What's the total savings over five years, or currently spending?
From what you're currently spending, it would be five times 598,000.
So 2.5?
Roughly $3 million.
Okay, good. All right, sorry to, I just wanted everybody to...
2.5.
I wanted to start the conversation, if we're going to approve something, to, so everybody knows exactly what we're saving with what we did with this, with your group.
And by the way, just...
Mr. Martins, you have further clarification?
Just to clarify, the savings are based on your current expended, level of expenditure, not your budget.
We understand that, okay.
On, oh, I guess this is the discussion five, where it says the savings, you're using a projected cost. You, you projected it the cost...
Correct.
And what has actually come in as the bid. Is that correct?
I'm using your projected expenditures for the van transportation this year versus the bid cost next year for the same level of services.
Okay, so that, but they're, they're your projections that you are using as the basis for which to determine the savings from the bid?
Correct.
But what was the cost of the transportation for the vans last year, or the current year? I mean, these figures, I could turn around and say, well, I projected, you know, $500,000 more than what it says here, and then I would up the savings by another $500,000.
The specialized transportation in 2017, '18 totaled 6.2 million and change.
For the vans only?
That included the vans and the in-district buses.
Vans and in-district buses?
Van and in-district buses.
But not just the vans?
Not just the vans, correct.
From the data that I have here, I can't determine the actual savings. I'm sorry. On the, on the original bid, when I go into, going into number six, discussion six, where this is the rebid now, and this thing goes into, especially when you go into the cost data, for all, you know, where alternative one, and you look at that, and on page, you know, on page forty, it says page forty-four here, and makes reference to buses, all buses. You know, A1, A2, A3, so forth, and that, references to all buses. And you're talking here, the yellow buses and no vans.
Correct.
The vans that I understand to be would be, could be driven by a 7D licensed person, correct?
Correct.
Right, and, well, some vans are kind of big, they could hold about 15 people with the driver, including the driver.
In Massachusetts, you cannot use a van that holds more than 10, plus the driver.
Okay, well...
There are vans that, that do seat 15, but under 7D law, it's 10 max.
Plus the driver, or not including the driver?
I'm sorry?
Plus the driver, which would be 11, or including the driver?
Would be 10, including the driver.
Including the driver, okay. Now, you go into the special education transportation, and again, it references all buses. You know, and when I bring this up, I see on the special ed transportation, 15-passenger buses.
Correct.
But I wasn't, but that's not a van.
That is not a van.
Then, on, going now to number six, again, this is for multiple contractors, where that, if the bidder could bid on the regular ed school buses, is that correct, for the first one?
Under alternative one, a bidder can bid on all three segments of what we are bidding, which includes regular transportation for buses in district, bus transportation for special ed, and athletics and field trips is the third part. Under alternative two, a bidder can bid on each of the sections as opposed to all of the sections.
That's where I was going to get to, in that number one is a single contractor for everything.
A single contractor for every yellow bus, correct.
Which no one bid the first time around on the yellow buses all throughout the district.
Correct. The alternative breaks it into three sections to allow multiple bidders for the yellow buses, but still gives us the opportunity to tier and optimize the routes.
One of the issues, or the problems that I have, is that, at least the alternate is more palatable for me, to allow to have additional contractors. There was a statement in here, back to number five, which part of the, the request for approval or to vote on this, was in the best interest of the public, general public. I don't exactly, not exactly quoting it, but basically that. My concern is that by so doing, though, is it in the best interest of the community? Where the bus companies can't bid, or the local companies can't bid on this, they don't have the resources to do so, and if they don't get a bid, they'll end up laying off people. Now, is that in the best interest of the community? I don't know.
There is a requirement in the specifications that the new contractor is required to offer employment to all of the existing drivers who meet their qualifications.
We also don't want the companies to go out of business either.
If I could, Mr. Martins?
I'm sorry?
If I could on that issue?
Absolutely.
I think it's the responsibility, I feel my responsibility, in working with Futures was the best interest of the district, which in turn becomes the best interest of the community, because the community is paying for everything we do. And this being an item on the city's side, if there's a million dollars to be saved, then that's a million dollars that the community is saving on this. And I understand what you're saying, the bus companies have been working with us for five years on the contract, and those costs have risen each and every year to an astronomical amount, uncontrollable amount. And we're hoping, and my goal here was to stop that continuous rise, jumping a million dollars a year or so, and get some control of this. And I, the contract we currently are working under is uncontrollable, at least from where I sit.
I can, I can appreciate your comment. I also have concerns for the welfare and the employees of these companies in there. Can, how does that affect the, the community of Fall River? Why can't there be zoning for transportation where the buses, now there's no vans in this at all that you rebid, right? No vans at all, for the, you know, zoning to have that? Is it so far out of line that, you know, it's prohibitive to do so? But, you know, why can't that happen? Why would it be so prohibitive to do so?
So by breaking the contract up into three pieces, the sports runs, the regular ed, and the special ed busing, we are breaking it down into small groups. Thirty-two buses is not a far ask. We have companies that are working for us now that have those resources at their fingertips right now. I can, three, three or four of the companies that are working for us have those res... Like, three, three or four of the companies that are working for us have those resources.
Collectively?
By themselves.
Singulately?
Singulately. They have those resources. Forty-three buses on the other route, in-district summer, that's a small contract, so I believe that by doing this, we've allowed the locals to get involved in this particular piece. The zoning piece becomes a situation where our hands are tied for tiering, and the whole purpose of rewriting this, the IFP, so that we could move forward with a tiering system, we possibly could have one, two, or three schools picked up by the same buses, and that would save us one and a half to two buses per route, and those numbers will be astronomical. So, once we break the city into zones, we give away that ability to tier, because now bus company A and bus company B, two different companies, the tiering options have been limited. So we take a quarter, each time we do this, we take a quarter of our tiering options away if different companies are bidding on this. If we keep the three system that we bid, all of regular ed transportation is now tiered, so we can tier from one school all the way through our other schools, as long as the times work, at the start times and end times. The same thing with our special ed transportation, we'll be able to tier all of special ed. It won't matter that the regular ed and the special ed are two different companies, what will matter is that we can tier all special ed.
What's going on now?
Right now, we can only tier if bus company A, I'm going to call it Talbot, is working at Talbot, and we want to tier with CUS. If bus company B is at CUS, I can't tier those two schools, so my option of tiering is eliminated. If bus company A had both schools, then I can tier those schools. So it, I don't have the ability to tier across the board. I only have the ability to tier when companies, when companies, like companies are at different schools.
I forgot to shut the door, sorry. I apologize for that.
The tiering is a major piece that we're missing right now, and it's causing us not to be able to make extra savings, additional savings on what we do.
Okay, uh, so the end results, then, there's still a question on the, that amount, back to number five. That's, uh...
So, Mr. Martins, it's not all projections, though, because you consider that this year we are, we do have actuals up to this point, and what we're projecting out is the remainder of the year, based on what we've used and using some historical data.
Oh, I'm, I'm not questioning your integrity. I'm questioning the fact that, wait a minute, uh, you know, if I were to increase all of those projected numbers, and then subtract out the bid number, I'd have a larger saving, wouldn't I? At least on paper, I would have it, but in reality, I don't.
But that would be extremely disingenuous on our part.
Uh, you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Uh, five?
Motion to approve number five has been made. Mr. Vice Chair, you have a question, comment?
Just a second, in, in, just a second.
Just a second, okay. Very good, I'll take that. All right. Motion has been made and seconded to approve item number five, which is the transportation contract with Tremblies Bus-Vans. Roll call, please.
Mr. Agia? Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
No.
Mayor Carruth.
Yes. Thank you. Item number, item number six, a discussion vote to approve the-
Motion to approve.
Transportation IFB yellow buses bid specifications.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Comments, questions? Mr. Agia?
Yeah, I just had a question on the bus pass information that was handed out with this presentation?
It wasn't, it wasn't handed out as part of the agenda. That was an item asked for after.
Right, so relative to the transportation contract, and how does the bus passes figure into that? Does it help, or does it hurt? Is there flexibility in the number six?
So it's not, it's not part of the, it's not part of the bid, because SRTA provides that service, so it is not part of this bid.
So it has no bearing on?
No.
And if, if it was cheaper to do it that way, if it was cheaper to do it the other way, is there an option for that?
As far as yellow buses versus, for the high school? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
It's no comparison, the SRTA is much cheaper than, we could provide services by yellow buses.
So who is getting the, whatever the amount of bus passes at the high school? Is it?
Those are all high-
Everybody's getting it that's just wanted, or is it?
The passes are being distributed based on the, um, the scheduled free reduced lunch, those students were eligible, and the price reductions based on that. And those are all current students, on that list are all current students.
Right.
Between RPA also, some of those students.
Yep. My only concern is just, I guess it's good to get a number, but the way that I'm looking at the numbers, they're going to go up pretty seriously from last year to this year, so even that's going up. And that's, you say that's cheaper?
It's still cheaper than-
But it's still going up?
It's still cheaper than the yellow, than providing yellow bus services. Excuse me?
Would you agree that it's going up? Are we transporting more students, or more students come into the high school based on this?
We're trans, yeah, we're transporting about eleven hundred, about a thousand students a day, eleven hundred students a day.
And is that more or less than last year?
It's going up, it has gone up.
To answer your question budget-wise, in 2017-18, we spent roughly $198,000 with SRTA, and you're projected to spend $243,000 this year, because you-
What was that number in 17-18?
$197,760.
Because the document we have in front of us says $177,000. For FY 17-18?
With total vouchers? Vouchers and paper?
Yeah, it says total spent, $170,000, and he's saying $198,000, that's $30,000 off.
I don't know what you're, I don't know what you're looking at, but this came, this came from the accounting department.
You understand why that would be a question, right? It's $30,000 off?
I will check on that, then.
Maybe we can just get some kind of analysis of it?
Mr. Agia, you want to get back to the item?
Yep, and it's related to transportation.
No, no.
I think we need to get some, I think we need to get some further information and analysis just on that, because I think that's a major part of transporting our students.
I will.
And, uh, just on number six, I know the subcommittee met, and we went over it pretty intensely. I share some of Mr. Martins' concerns about the smaller companies. You both assured the committee, the subcommittee, that they did have the capacity to bid it. It was sort of the next best thing than going out as a whole, so I do think there's more opportunities for the small companies to at least put it in the bid, and I hope that they do that, because some people have been real good to this, uh, school department, and I wouldn't want them to be out of business over this, so I will be supporting this based on the information you gave, Ayew.
Okay, thank you. There's been a motion that was made and seconded, roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
No.
Mayor Carruth.
Yes. Item number seven is a vote, thank you, gentlemen. Item number seven is a vote to approve the second quarter revolving fund. Their motion?
So moved.
Motion has been made, it's seconded. Questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Carruth.
Yes. Item number eight is a vote to approve the year-to-date budget report. There a motion?
So moved.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Second, questions, comments? Mr. Agia?
Yeah, I see there's one highlight. Maybe you could just get a description of that?
Sure, it's the repairs and maintenance account for buildings and vehicles. We've overspent that line with some additional repairs this year. I'm going to come forward to you next month with a second quarter transfer.
Is that the one that was, the contract that was before, earlier?
Is that?
Is that what this is?
It is part, it's part of it, yes.
And how does that make it for the year?
I'm sorry?
So when we do it, a transfer, it's going to be for the year, so we, is there anything budgeted for the rest of the year?
I will, I will put in additional funds to cover us for the end of the year.
So it's not going to be just zeroed and then come back again?
Correct.
Do you know in the top line, the professional salaries? If that, where it says available budget, $5.5 million? How much of that is actual, uh, available?
How much of that is available? I can get, I can, I can get you an answer this week.
You know the question, right?
Yeah, I got you.
Yeah, if you could get that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you, Ayew.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Carruth.
Yes. There are a number of items for your information this evening.
Motion to accept and place on file, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to accept and place on files has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Agia? Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Carruth.
Yes. Any new business this evening? Okay. We do have a number of items to go into executive session for.
Chairman, we forward to that, yeah? If I can make a motion to accept the addendum for executive session?
Motion has been made to accept the addendum, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins? Mayor Carruth.
Yes. All right, there are a number of items for executive session. I will ask Attorney Assad to read those items, and then ask for a motion to be made to go into executive session.
First would be Mass General Law's Chapter 38, Section 21A7, to review and approve executive session committee minutes for the December 10, 2018, regular meeting of the Forward School Committee. Next would be Mass General Law's Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all maintenance employees of the Forward School System represented by the American Federation of State, County, Municipal Employees, Council 93, Local 1118. Also, Mass General Law's Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all custodial employees of the Forward School System represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Council 93, Local 1118, as both for the maintenance and custodial employees, the chairs determine that an open meeting may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee, therefore will be an executive session on both of those. Next, Mass General Law's Chapter 38, Section 21A1, to review the open meeting law complaint dated December 11, 2018, filed by Colin Davis regarding allegation at the Forward School Committee meeting of December 10, 2018, the Forward School Committee and Mayor Jezzal F. Carruth II violated the Mass General Law's Chapter 38, Section 20A and 20G by allegedly inviting everyone who was present at the meeting for the recognition awards to leave. Next, with Mass General Law's Chapter 38, Section 21A1, to review the open meeting law complaint dated December 11, 2018, filed by Colin Davis regarding allegation at the Forward School Committee, at the Forward School Committee meeting of December 10, 2018, the Forward School Committee and Mayor Jezzal F. Carruth II violated the Mass General Law's Chapter 38, Section 22 and 20B by addressing item four on the agenda, recognition awards, prior to addressing item number three on the agenda, citizens' input without a vote. Next is Mass General Law's Chapter 38, Section 21A1, to review the open meeting law complaint dated December 11, 2018, filed by Colin Davis regarding allegations at the Forward School Committee meeting of December 10, 2018, the Forward School Committee and Mayor Jezzal F. Carruth II violated the open meeting law when the school committee approved the minutes from August 20, 2018, October 15, 2018, and November 19, 2018, without a formal motion to approve the minutes, and that the August 20, 2018 minutes were approved late. Next is Mass General Law's Chapter 38, Section 21A1, to review the open meeting law complaint dated December 11, 2018, filed by Colin Davis regarding the allegation that at the Forward School Committee meeting of December 10, 2018, the Forward School Committee and Mayor Jezzal F. Carruth II violated the open meeting law when Chairman Jezzal F. Carruth II did not state the purpose of executive session, and did not announce whether the open session will reconvene, but instead instructed and authorized legal counsel to the school committee to state the purposes of the executive session, and to announce that the school committee would reconvene in open session. Next is Mass General Law's Chapter 38, Section 21A1, to review the open meeting law complaint dated December 11, 2018, filed by Colin Davis regarding the allegations that at the Forward School Committee meeting December 10, 2018, the Forward School Committee and Mayor Jezzal F. Carruth II were in violation of the open meeting law as eight of the 10 items listed under the discussions was proceeded with a statement, vote to approve, which Mr. Dias alleges expressed the opinion of the chair. Next is Mass General Law's Chapter 38, Section 21A1, to review the open meeting law complaint dated December 11, 2018, filed by Colin Davis regarding allegation at the Forward School Committee meeting of December 10, 2018, the Forward School Committee and Mayor Jezzal F. Carruth II were in violation of Mass General Law's Chapter, uh, Section 20B of the open meeting law, Mr. Dias alleges that the addendum was not read in open session. Next, Mass General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 21A1, to review the open meeting law complaint dated December 28, 2018, filed by Colin Davis, that questions eligibility of a school committee member to serve on the school committee, Mr. Dias alleges that the school committee and Mayor Jezzal F. Carruth II violated the open meeting law at the Forward School Committee meeting of December 10, 2018. Next would be Mass General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 21A1, to review the open meeting law complaint dated December 28, 2018, filed by Colin Davis regarding the fact that on December 24, 2018, Attorney Bruce Assad, legal counsel to the Forward School Committee, responded to Mr. Dias's December 5, 2018, and December 7, 2018, meeting law complaints. Mr. Dias claims violation of the open meeting law is that the response prepared by Attorney Assad was addressed to the Attorney General's office and CC'd to him. Mr. Dias alleges that since the response was addressed to the Attorney General's office, the school committee violated the open meeting law. Next is Mass General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel and/or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, including Elizabeth Olsen, Special Education Bilingual Community Facilitator. Also, with respect to the addendum, would be, for executive session, would be Mass General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 21A1, to review the open meeting law complaint dated January 11, 2018, which was, what was on the complaint itself, filed by Colin Davis regarding allegations that the chair, that the chair, at the chair has made appointments to the school department and is placing fake items on the agenda of the Forward School Committee in violation of Section 20B of the, of the open meeting law. Next is Mass General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 21A1, to review the open meeting law complaint dated January 21, again, dated 2018, filed by Colin Davis, Dias, rather, regarding allegations that the chair is placing fake travel requests on the agenda of the Forward School Committee in violation of Section 20B of the open meeting law. The committee will reconvene in open session, there may or may not be statements at that time.
Motion for executive session? Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey? Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Carruth.
Yes. Thank you. The meeting will come back to water. Roll call, please.
Mr. Agia?
Here.
Mr. Coogan?
Yep.
Mr. Hetzel?
Here.
Mr. Hetzel?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Here.
Mayor Carruth.
Here. Have any motions from executive session to be made?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the executive session committee minutes for the December 10, 2018, regular meeting of the Forward School Committee.
Second.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Carruth.
Yes.
Motion. Motion to approve the contract between the Forward School Committee and Elizabeth Olsen, Special Education Bilingual Community Facilitator, as negotiated. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Carruth.
Yes. Any other motions? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion to adjourn has been made, second, roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.